Good for you.
So you can have some. It was funny though. I waited here a second. At this time, we will begin the Adrian City Commission Work Study Session for April 4th, 2022. Roll call please. Mayor E., present. Commissioner Health is absent. Commissioner Roberts is absent. Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Strayer?
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Present.
Commissioner Gouss?
Present.
All commissioners present except for Commissioner Health and Commissioner Roberts. And at this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item tonight is a presentation. We talked about a few pre-meetings back regarding the status of community mental health in Lenawee County. Joining us, I think, on Zoom is Catherine, will be on Zoom?
I'm right here.
Oh, you're here. Okay. It's Catherine Suchek and Frank Nagel. Catherine, I think has a PowerPoint that we're going to put up. And I'll let you introduce the rest of your team, because I know who all are brought with you tonight. But welcome. And the floor is yours. And we'll bring up your PowerPoint on the screen.
That sounds great. Catherine Suchek, I'm the executive director for Lenawee Community Mental Health. And with me is Holly Owen, our chief operating officer, and Jackie Bradley, who is our community outreach program director, compliance and many other hats. And then we're just going to run through our services that we provide to the community and talk a little bit about CMH. So do we have the?
Michelle, can we have the PowerPoint?
Yeah, give me just a second.
I can go ahead and get started. The first slide that we talk about is the public behavioral health system. The public behavioral health system in Michigan is primarily funded by Medicaid money. So in Lenawee, for example, our budget is more than 90% Medicaid, which is why you'll see that we primarily serve the Medicaid population because we can only use that money to serve people who are Medicaid eligible. Medicaid is split between, you can go to the next slide, thank you. And that's just the agenda for today. Next slide. And one more. Thank you. The Medicaid money is split into essentially two systems. The Medicaid health plans provide both physical health care and mental health care. The mental health care is for what is called the mild moderate population. The funding for more severely impacted Medicaid recipients is carved out of that money and contracted with 10 regions around the state. Those regions provide the mental health, behavioral health, substance abuse treatment to the population that's most severely impacted. So think about this as though it's like a specialty care. If we use an example of allergies, lots of people have allergies and they're coming out right now. We're all getting them. So many people will take over the counter drugs or their doctor may prescribe something to be mild and misty, something that helps get them through the allergy season. There may be other people who are more severely impacted by allergies and really struggle to even function. They may have to go see a specialist. It may get to the point where they might need some type of surgery or something. That's us. That's when it's impacting a person's ability to function that we provide the services to. Then they'll, we'll provide whatever services it takes for someone to recover, as we call it in our system, so that they're able to go back to functioning in their life in the way that they are hoping to be able to do. So for somebody with those very severe allergies, seeing a specialist as that, as they begin to recover and function, they go back to their primary care doctor. That's really what our system is like. So we're there for the most severe issues for a short amount of time, walking along with people. Now, there are some people who are long-term in services with us, but those numbers aren't as large as the number of people that actually come through for services. So that's really kind of what that picture shows. Somebody may come in for a period of time, we provide services, and then they may be able to go back to like the way they like it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Holly to talk about what those services look like.
The next slide, please. And then that slide. So it's more like Catherine said, an overview of who we serve, what services. So here you see CMH serves individuals with serious mental illness, individuals that are developmental disabled, children with serious emotional disturbance, individuals with substance use disorder, and then anyone in crisis. So anyone in the community can call us regardless of their diagnosis or their eligibility for Medicaid, and we're available. Next slide. So like Catherine mentioned, the majority of the individuals we serve do have Medicaid. However, we do also have what's called general fund. And so those individuals that may be underinsured or uninsured, they meet our criteria, then you may use that general fund for services. And then they may be charged depending on their ability to pay. So anyone that comes in for services, we complete ability to pay, and then it's based off of their income. And then if they're, do not have Medicaid, and depending on where our general funds are, there may be a waitlist. All individuals that have insurance have to use it. So if someone has Blue Cross Blue Shield, they need, they use that insurance. Or someone has dual, say they have Medicare or Blue Cross Blue Shield with Medicaid, then they would use their primary insurance, and Medicaid is only secondary. Next slide. This just states that our crisis line is available to all community members, and there's a phone number. And then next slide. And then access to services. So anyone that calls to request any type of services goes through our access department. And those are master levels for insurance that will do a screening and then potentially an intake. And so what they're looking for are the medical necessity. And what that means is looking at the diagnosis. Also, are they, do they require services that are considered the specialty services? So is it someone that has more mild to moderate that could potentially, potentially be served by someone in the community? And then their level of care, which is we, for children and for adults, we have two different tools that we use to determine level of care. And then their functional impairment. So we look at how is someone functioning? Are they having severe symptoms to the point where they are not completing personal care? Or they are not able to maintain employment? Are they, have they been psychiatrically hospitalized in the past? Or do they have no history of that? And then we also do look at history of treatment. And then we always assess self-harm. So was that individual having suicide ideation? And then we assess as far as the risk level for that. And then the same for homicidal ideation, we always assess first with that as well. And then next slide, please. Then here's an overview of our services that CMH provides directly. So CMH staff are providing these services. And we, anyone with Medicaid, we do pre-screening for psychiatric hospital. And then we do have case management, case managers that work with adults, children, and adult and children with intellectual developmental disability. And those are people that really look at linking to services, monitoring services, looking at what are the individual needs and how can we help them into recovery. And we do have a couple of different waivers for children and adults through the state. And then we do have doctors, psychiatrists on staff as well, and nurses. And then we do provide children services. We have evidence-based practices. Next slide. And then these are additional services that we provide, but we have a contract with. So our staff don't provide these services, but we do contract with multiple community providers for the therapy, respite services, substance use services. And that ranges from outpatient to detox residential services. We have a contract with Goodwill for still building supported employment. And then community living supports is really helping individuals with being independent in something, working on skills, working on community inclusion. And then we do specialize in residential homes for both intellectual developmental disability and also individuals with mental illness that we contract with providers. Next slide.
Okay, so this is Pathways Engagement Center. Next slide. Pathways is a recovery-based program. The building itself is just down the road. It's next to Napa. So we can walk there from here, even in heels. And it's, it's a center that's open after hours for people who are experiencing substance use issues or co-occurring substance use and mental health. The purpose of having the Engagement Center is having a place for somebody to go struggling with substance use and is open when we're not open, when their treatment provider isn't open. And when people tend to struggle with substance use, especially in the evenings, gives them a place to go where they can meet with certified recovery coaches. These are people who have at least three years of recovery. Many of them have many, many more years than that. And they talk about their own story. They help somebody start to think about a road to recovery, working on a recovery plan. It's a group of people that will help to advocate for them and get them connected to other services. We do have a couple of people that then can follow up during the day to get those linkages happening. They hold smart recovery groups twice a day, sometimes more on the weekends. And that's a place for somebody to go and start to really have that conversation about recovery with people who know what they're talking about, who've actually done it. It's, it's a very warm, welcoming place. It's very comfortable. We don't have any beds, even though it's overnight. It's not really a place to sleep, but people have fallen asleep on the couch, and that's fine. We can feed them a meal if somebody comes in and they need a shower. There's, there's clothes they can put on. They can, we can clean their clothes. And people come from the hospital, actually, from Chomedica, to send some people over there to connect with recovery coaches. It's open from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM during the week, and then 24 hours on the weekend. Next slide.
Right. In addition to providing clinical services, CMH is also really involved in the community. So we are the backbone organization for the Lenawee Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, meaning we guide strategy and vision, support activities, and help mobilize resources. Chomedica is also a lead partner in this work. And together, we recently secured a three-year, $1 million grant to help support these activities. Next slide. Some examples of those activities are Drug Take Back Day, an opportunity for community members to dispose of potentially dangerous unused or expired medications or sharks. No questions asked. Next slide. And a partnership with a mobile medical provider who is able to provide acute care, prescribed medication-assisted treatment for substance use disorder, and connect people to long-term support in the community. Next slide, please. BMH is also the backbone organization for the Collective Impact Corps, which focuses on making Lenawee County a more trauma-informed and resilient community by educating people about the impacts of trauma and ensuring that everyone has what they need to support themselves and each other. And next slide. That is our contact information. That's it for our presentation.
Frank, did you have anything you wanted to add as well?
Yeah, so with the HERSA grant, well, with the Collective Impact Corps, for several years, we conduct community health assessments. We look at what is the health trends of the community? And then how can we, through the Collective Impact Corps, bring our organizations together to align abilities to make impact long-term? It's really important because we know our community's health needs shift much more within that three-year period than they do. It's not on that three-year cadence that the health needs shift and change. So that's what's really important is now we're looking at our, we're continuing to evaluate our abilities to have more real-time data on hand, to have more of those real conversations like we are here, to look at ways we can collaborate to address the community's health needs. And so for the space of substance use, we actually, before the implementation grant, received a planning grant from HERSA where we brought in consultants to help with not only conducting a county opioid assessment, but also to do the strategic planning. And so one of the crossovers from that planning grants now is we have a group out of Dayton called Strategic Innovations Group LLC that helped work with the opioid epidemic in Dayton. And it's helped us to really look at what's working well in the community, how do we build upon that? Like the Drug Take Back Day events that, collaborative events that a hospital, sheriff's department, community organizations work on. How do we keep building capacities of those programs and look at where can we close gaps? And so with the HERSA grant on the slide, we saw some of the work groups that are there. We've mobilized or really built capacities collectively to move from being a monthly meeting where we're reviewing updates to have those six project-based work groups for more specialized organizations with strengths in those areas or interest in supporting, come together to look at what can we prioritize here over a defined period? How can we allocate resources to be able to make a difference? So we've been really working on, on that specifically from a community perspective. And also joining today is Dr. Yarrow and Brian Ward, who have been working really hard with our teams from the hospital to be able to look at the health needs that come into our four walls, and then how do we connect to resources outside our four walls so patients are supported? So I don't know if there's anything that you'd like to add.
Yeah, we weren't really certain. So Frank asked us to join just to see if you had any questions, just so we could filter those maybe, or give you some responses for those individuals in Lenawee County that may go into an acute crisis. So typically, all of those patients that go to an acute crisis come to us. So we pulled up about a year's worth of data, just to give you an idea of how many mental health patients we see on average in our emergency department, how many of those actually require an inpatient stay, and then how many of those also have an underlying substance abuse disorder. So I don't, I'm not going to break it down by month by month, but just to give you an idea, our months can be anywhere from 42 mental health patients in our ED to as high as 67 mental health patients in our ED. Substance abuse diagnosis, in addition to possibly a suicidal, homicidal, depression, schizophrenia, is anywhere from 23 patients a month to 50 out of those 42 to 67. And then typically, anywhere from 19 to 38 patients a month require an inpatient stay. Pediatric population is probably our smallest population that we see as requiring inpatient stay. We average anywhere from two to six pediatric patients a month that require an inpatient stay. And geriatric patients are from one to five. You know, we've spoken a lot to many community members related to mental health in the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan is the third worst state for mental health, not just based on sole numbers of how many individuals we have suffering from mental health, but the amount of care that we're able to provide at a state level. So we rank just above California and Texas. That's not a stat that you want to comment on. So, you know, we, Brian and myself, as well as Frank and others in the community, have really tried to assist the state in guidance of state-directed dollars towards mental health, looking at opportunities to get additional dollars from state federal funding for inpatient beds. Wait times for us can anywhere be from an average of patients waiting 10 hours in an inpatient mental health bed to an average of 95 hours. But we can share pediatric cases, which are much more difficult than the state of Michigan, can be weeks before we can get an inpatient bed. And that's not unique to Lenawee County. Counterparts that I have in the northern current state can wait five to six weeks before they can get an inpatient bed for pediatric patients. Adults are a little bit easier. Geriatric can be a little more difficult just based on nuances. So that just gives you a little bit of an idea of how many patients. Those aren't specific to the city of Adrian. That's all Lenawee. And those can also be individuals outside the county. We have people wandering from Detroit, Ohio, Indiana, and they'll end up in our very soon because they're staying with friends or family or visiting.
Tell us the bottom three. Who's at the top in terms of states?
I don't have that data, but I'd be more than happy to get that back to you and share that.
Just wondering if there's anything we can learn from them.
So when somebody comes to your facility at Hickman, how long do they get to stay? Whether it be mental health crisis or drug issue?
Well, we keep them as long as they need to stay. We don't kick them out, per se. You know, probably a perception that a lot of the community doesn't realize is someone comes in with a substance abuse disorder and they don't detox, per se. The emergency room will admit them, move onto our medical units, and we'll detox them, whether it's heroin, cocaine, alcohol use. So we do do bedside consults, either via face-to-face or through telehealth with psychiatrists. But then again, if that patient then has an underlying suicidal, homicidal, nonanother medical diagnosis and needs further care, then we transfer them to a psychiatric facility where they can get more of a teamwork approach to that care.
So if somebody comes and they have a heroin problem, maybe it takes a week for detox. Okay, which I'm, am I correct there?
No, it's usually, it can be hours to 24 hours.
Okay.
So just because you're detoxed, that just means your level is down to a safe level that you have. That doesn't mean all of a sudden you're closing a different pathway.
Okay, that's where I was going with it. So they detoxed at your place, but now we're sending them back out to the same environment where they got in trouble before. So what can we do to change that?
Yeah, so we do, we have a social worker that works in our emergency room. She also goes up on our floors. It's just her job is solely to work with our mental health patients, whether it's a pure depression or it's also somebody with substance abuse. So she tries to connect them with resources, whether it's through community mental health or other agencies in the county to try to get them help. We also, for five years, Frank, four years, have been trying to do a peer recovery coach that we would actually bring somebody into the emergency room or connect somebody while they're in crisis or ED with a recovery coach. Hasn't been an easy mission for us because there's not a lot of resources for us to tap into. We haven't given up. You know, we have some conversations with a group that has done this in Florida, as well as the East Coast, that has some more creative ideas on how you can maybe train your own or build your own recovery coaches. But we don't just let them go. We do give them the resources, but unfortunately, they have to make the decision then to take to the best stuff.
Are there federal funds available to you in mental health that put us in the right direction? I guess everything that I heard here today is impressive, and everybody is working. But at the same time, from a commissioner's standpoint, we hear things like, well, we need more police to deal with drugs. But at the same time, we know that, you know, police are not going to, to change this problem. It's, it's a social issue. Okay? And so when we hear from constituents that, you know, what are we doing about these drug problems? And there are families that have had, have experienced mental health. When we hear these things, I'm not sure what to tell them. I mean, you've told us a lot of things today, but tomorrow, if somebody stops me out of the street and says, what are we doing about the heroin problem or crack, cocaine, or pharmaceuticals? Even after hearing what you had to say tonight, I'm not 100% sure how I can answer their question.
Yeah, so I'll take a stab at that. And then, you know, Catherine pointed out, it's not always just about money. Money doesn't deliver care or solutions. It's people. And mental health is really a team approach. It doesn't just take a provider or a nurse making a diagnosis, but it takes a social worker. It takes therapists. It takes recovery coaches. It takes a solid family foundation, and it really takes a community with resources. So money is something that's needed. But again, you need manpower then to implement the initiatives with those dollars. So again, I can speak at a Michigan Hospital Association level, you know, where we went after $300 million to do pediatric beds or pediatric beds. It's about $1 million to do one pediatric bed. So that eats up a lot of dollars really quickly. But again, it's not so much that we all need space. We need psychiatrists. We need nurses. We need therapists. Because without people, you don't deliver effective care. So sometimes you could throw more money at me, and I don't want it, but I mean, I don't want to turn it away. But I need the people. And, and sometimes it's not that I can throw more money at them and they can work more hours. People can only work so many hours. So at least when we sit at an MH, Michigan Hospital level, we talk about licensure, looking at licensures and talking with local community colleges, graduate degree programs. How can we expand licensure of existing programs so more people can touch those patients effectively? And maybe our current licensure is a little restrictive. How can we learn from other counties, Oakland County? How can we do a better payer mix for what services we are doing? Because I'm not going to lie, we don't, we don't break even in mental health. What other, how can we expand telehealth? But telehealth, again, still needs a person, and a person can only see so many people through technology. Can you do more group therapy? I still feel like there's a lot to do at the grassroots that you can do just at a community level. It doesn't always have to be at a psychiatrist or a nurse level. But that's maybe where Catherine can talk a little bit more about.
Yeah, when, when you were asking that question, I was thinking about some of the work that Frank and Jackie were talking about with Prevention Coalition. And that's where the community comes together to look at what, what are we dealing with in our community and what are some strategies? But if, if you come across somebody tomorrow who needs help, have them call us. Even if it's, even if we're not the one that's going to help them, we'll get them connected to help. That's why we're here. Again, it's, it's really having people available. Dr. Yarrow and I spoke with the House of Representatives Health Policy Council last week or the week before just to talk about workforce shortages. It's, it's a true problem around the entire state, around the country. But we're sharing that same struggle here in Lenawee County. How do we, how do we make sure we have enough people to provide the care? Because again, it's not just the money. It's having the people. And then how do we connect with somebody who needs some care? And Chomedica has done a great job at night contacting Pathways to say, we have somebody here. They've detoxed. They're willing to come to you, and they send them to us. And then our recovery coaches try to start that engagement piece. It's hard once people get back out in the community and get reconnected with somebody who they know where they can get some drugs. And they're just not quite ready yet, but we just keep inviting them back. And as often as we can to try to engage people, we put together some groups. We do outreach. We'll call people with their permission. Again, the work that we do, it's really up to the person to then connect with us. We can be pretty persistent. We can be pretty persistent, but if somebody really doesn't, isn't ready for it yet, it, we're not going, we can't force them, nor would we. But we're there, we're trying to be there, we're trying to be available. Our crisis line is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We don't take holidays off. You can call us anytime, day or night, just with a question if you want. How do I access the service? You can call us because you're worried about somebody or, and, and we may say, okay, that's the appropriate time. Call the police to do a welfare check, that's what we're here for. So we're always looking for new creative ways to engage people and, and the work that we're doing through our Blink of Impact work is looking at that in a lot of different environments, through the healthcare, through financial stability, housing, all sorts of things that we're looking at through working.
I was gonna say, if I could add, so federally, there are more grants that are coming out to support related work. So our corporate grants department actually actively looks for grants and they say, hey, here's an application. Let's jump on the webinar, see if we're eligible. And so over the last three years, that's what's really prompted to get the planning grant, hold community matters together, and then work into this space of implementation. So we're actively positioning our current grant for an ability to reapply for more federal funding down the road because that can help us collectively fill capacities. One of the other things that this collaborative really affords is a space to help residents navigate resources. We have complex systems that often are difficult for individuals to navigate. And so sometimes it's a matter of awareness, knowing what resources are available. And the other side of it is something Catherine mentioned, working hand in hand with those individuals so they know what options are available to them versus it being, you know, a prescriptive plan. Here's what you need to do. So we're really working hard on those aspects to increase awareness of what's working well. And the example of some of the tools that we've been able to connect with to help us understand that, just one example, University of Michigan has a, a opioid surveillance tool that maps overdoses and EMS deloxin administrations in the community. We can look at our entire county map to see where those are happening and then we can mobilize education, resources, and outreach efforts to be more tactical and direct in our abilities and our outreach with our current resources and continue pursuing those other large funding sources that help us to make those system level change or policy level changes that will really help us to be, you know, a state where we're at third worst versus being on the other side of that spectrum where we're trending toward the best.
I, I feel like I know just enough to be dangerous, okay? And, and I learned some of these things from talking to some heroin addicts, some recovered heroin addicts. And it seems like the conversation always comes back around to, you can't put somebody in a 30-day program and expect them to recover. It, it takes a much longer time to recover. So I guess that's my big question is, how do we get to that point in Lenawee County where we have some place that somebody can be for a year? But, and, and when I ask that question, I'm only really referring to drugs, not other mental health issues, because I feel like they're two totally different games. Like I said, I only know enough.
It can be co-occurring. It can be, it can be co-occurring.
Okay, okay.
You know, and Dr. Yarrow, I guess I have one question too, is, you know, why is it, is it, is it a staffing? Is it a, is it a personnel issue of why it takes so long to get inpatient treatment sometimes?
Beds, there's a bed shortage across the state. And there is a bed shortage not because we don't have physical rooms, we don't have staff. And so again, we're talking staff, it, it takes a unique staff member to take their mental health. Um, and it's, it's a huge commitment. There are wonderful individuals, but it's not just nurses, it's security. Um, it's physicians, um, it's social workers, and then it's peer coaches. So we just don't have the manpower. There's been a small uptake in graduates for psychiatrists, but our largest resource were foreign medical grads. And then we've come close to those doors here in the last few years, so we lost a huge resource. Nurses was also the same thing. When I worked in Detroit, Filipino nurses were one of our largest resources for mental health nurses. We closed that door. So the number of individuals that we had to fill that need has definitely decreased. You know, one thing I would just add, you know, that I commented on is we talk about technology and technology is great. There's restrictions though in our state that prevent us in some things when we have involuntary issues. We can't use that technology, we need more face-to-face. And we find ways to get around that, but that is a limiting factor that we're working on at a state level. But the other piece is there is telehealth providers. But in a community this size, we usually don't have the volume that we can financially afford that. You usually need 200 touches a month in order to break even for that. But I've always questioned why communities don't come together. So could Lenawee County go with Oakland County or Jackson County or Hillsdale County and could they combine resources to tap into telehealth providers that could take care of multiple counts? And that way you can split that funding and you have more resources that could go beyond 30 days. Because I would say there's not a lot of people that want to stay confined in a building for greater than 30 days. And we're looking at partial hospitalization programs, but it's hard. Um, and it's expensive. But there's other ways that you can bring that therapy in the home. But again, you need volume. And I know it seems like we have a massive crisis and there's probably more than we don't even get to see on a day-to-day basis, but we probably don't have the volume to sustain what we're being asked to, to support on a financial. But that's where I would say, you know, at a state level, is there not a way to combine forces?
Dr. Yarrow, you already gave us some numbers and I think it was 42 to 67 mental health patients per month that were adults. And then you said there was, uh, I think you said 23 to 42, what was that that you mentioned?
So 40, we see, and this is all ages, from kids to adults, geriatric. Um, the total number, average number of mental health patients that we see in our emergency department is anywhere as low as 42 a month to as high as 67 a month.
Okay.
And then all of those patients, they can have an additional substance abuse, so the heroin, alcohol, marijuana, cocaine, that all falls under that. That can be 23 to 50 a month out of that 42 to 67.
Okay.
So again, there's usually a combined tool diagnosis.
And did you, I, I, I feel like you said the word schizophrenic. Did you, was that all the same to the 23 to 67?
Yeah, those are all, so when we say mental health, I'm, I'm combining everybody, any diagnosis, we don't break it down.
Okay. So what does stabilization and functioning look like um from community mental health in those cases then? Is it staffing too? What can we do to help support those things?
Not sure.
But what does stabilization of those patients look like? If, if they're, they're going to community mental health and then is it, do you guys, is staffing, I mean, staffing's an issue everywhere right now, right? So is that something that you're struggling with as well?
We, we are still trying to fill a number of positions, but we are still able to provide the 24-hour crisis stabilization, that's spending time with somebody to figure out what needs to happen to keep them safe and then get them into treatment. And we're, we have to get people into treatment within 14 days of their phone call when they meet our criteria. And we're doing that. So we are getting people into the level of treatment that they need. For substance use in mental health, is that the question?
Um, no, I was, I was, what, what, some of the serious mental health issues, what, what does stabilizing those patients look like?
It's moving somebody from crisis into um where they're no longer at risk to hurt themselves or someone else.
Okay.
And then ideally, they're also engaged in services with us. And for the most part, we are able to do that. Commissioner Strayer, um, you talked about have people having access to a residential placement. I'm like Dr. Yarrow said, most people do not want to be sent to a place for more than 30 days. I know some of them will go a little bit longer. The goal would be then to connect them with enough support services for them to be able to remain um in recovery. So it might be, where do they go live from there? We don't have recovery housing here. That would be, that would be something that would be a huge benefit to this community. So a place where people could go where residents are committed to staying in recovery and support one another. Um, and that's more like apartment living, which, you know, we all would prefer live in our own space and not be completely regulated by other people. Making sure that therapy's in place, making sure they have access to recovery coaches, making sure they're able to get to pathways at night if they're around people that aren't in recovery and they just need to be where they're safe. So there's lots of different ways that we can piece together a recovery plan on an individual basis. And that's typically how we do it and how our providers do it. They talk to each person to say, what is it that you need to be able to stay in recovery and maintain your spread? And then we try to help them build those resources.
Recovery housing really sounds like that should be a goal.
It would be a lovely goal to have.
But also what I'm hearing, and I don't have any issue with this, is that bottom line of, if I have a heroin problem or a drug problem, there's, there are resources for me out there. But the bottom line is it falls on my shoulders at the end of the day to recover. I can, you, we have services in the county and, but I have to follow through.
Yes, I, but I will say this, our recovery coaches and our peer supports will go way out of their way to continue to try to engage somebody. And it's, it's remarkable to watch recovery coaches or peer interact with other people because there's almost an instant connection most of the time. Um, they're gonna listen to somebody who walked the walk before them, so they're gonna listen to me. Doesn't matter what kind of training I have. There, and so we have been able to engage people that way. But you're right, we, we can't drag them in and, and give them a pill and fix everything. It really takes work on the person's part.
In recovery, do you have a, a sense of feeling that family members continue to play an important part?
Absolutely.
Tend to run away?
For those people who have family that, and, and I know for some of the folks who come in for treatment, their family's done, they tend to know.
Yeah.
And so part of the work that they do is, is there a way to reconnect with family? Is, how, how do we mend any relationships there? And if not, because sometimes it's not, then building a new support system that are helping to figure out how to do that. Really having a, a place to live when we struggle with homelessness, it's a lot harder.
So clearly, if another customer is seeing a mission plan that others do, that's like their hope. I remember clinic being out in the community, drug takeback. When we collaborate and come together, we can help people to see what's available, but most importantly, we can listen, you know, what could we do differently? Or how are things changing where maybe we need to think differently about how we deploy our resources?
Is this something that we were behind many years ago and we just keep getting farther behind because of this? Or is this something that we're just seeing a, a higher occurrence now? The, the reason I ask that is, I could have told you about that pediatric patient because my child had a psychotic episode. And this was in 2005, and it was nearly impossible to get inpatient treatment. And it took a lot of, a lot of pulling and, and a lot, it, it was a very long road back in 2005. So I know that from personal experience, that was quite a while ago when we were having trouble back then. So that's why I'm asking, is this something that has just, we've just gotten further behind as time has gone on? Or is it just that we are seeing a, a larger um amount of people suffering?
I think people are more aware actually.
Yeah, I would say it's been a broken system for a really long time on multiple levels. And definitely the pandemic has made it worse. I mean, you have social isolation, geriatric mental health is not through the roof, pediatric mental health has skyrocketed to higher levels. Substance abuse, yeah, it's gone up a little bit, but I would say our geriatric and our pediatric has probably been the greatest groups to suffer this because of the isolation, the social. Um, so I think it's a combination of both and I, we just haven't been able to get ahead of it. Um, and we're, we're near the third worst state that tells you we're far behind what everybody else is doing.
And that's really in accessing, in particular, inpatient beds. It's, it's especially difficult. Not for lack of trying on, on everybody's part, but.
No, I would, I would say though, it's also outpatient because you want to keep people from going in crisis. I'll be, I mean, I don't think, when we hear we have a lot of patients that aren't compliant or can't get in for months. Um, or again, mental health, like any other health, you have to take the initiative, pick up the phone, make the appointment, you have to go. You can't force somebody into that treatment. So, you know, we've made some strides in the last couple of years. We now have three providers, we have the first pediatric inpatient, pediatric outpatient provider, but we haven't had one for 25 years. Now we finally have one, actually two. Um, that's a huge improvement for us, but if you ask them, they're booked out for not sending answers.
Commissioner Kesselberg, you brought up this issue a few meetings back and asked um Mr. Elliott to arrange for this. I'm struggling to find, to find a way to help your unique population that you talked about that night and how they would access, you know, these, these resources. Do you have any thoughts about that?
I, I think part of it is, um, just like Dr. Yarrow talked about staffing and things like that. Um, I think there's um a, a lot of serious mental health crises in our community and, and when they go from the hospital or a hospital state, community mental health, their personal, um, their own personal behavioral health things. How are we keeping track there? And especially if they, you know, there's co-occurring substance abuse issues and family has left and there's not a support system. There's a lot of things in that tornado um that, that cause a lot of problems. And so I just thought it was important that the community know about this and see that they're trying to work and doing and, and what is it that we can do to help make a difference?
I'll probably add, housing is a huge, I would support Catherine's idea of the housing piece. But again, you're gonna need staff, you're gonna need funding, it's mostly folks don't have a way to report. Um, but Frank's helped us, um, we struggle with homeless folks. We have nowhere to send them, you know, and they will go to a park. And they will hang out in the park and then they come back to us, you know, we call them repeat users. It's just a revolving door.
If you're in the best state where they're safe and no longer harming themselves or a danger, uh, you can't force them to stay. You can try and convince them that, well, maybe just wait for more. Let's try another option and call in a couple hours, see if we can find a spot. But um it, it's a definite gap for a resource that's needed here for them to go where they can be safe.
I think there's seven apartments for permanent stable housing, right? And like I see, seven, which is a supportive housing program for the whole county.
When you look at collective health overall, fiscal, you know, mental behavioral, that's why our organization is so focused on social determines of health because the, the 80% of factors that determine somebody's health are outside of our four walls. It's healthcare, it's mental health. And so when we're looking at those community needs, we're thinking forward about how can we address that 80% outside of our four walls, which by way of 50% can be traced back to zip code. Um, it's really an effort to look at how do we invest back in community to mobilize resources to our residents to one, build trust and build confidence in the systems that they've tried navigating a handful of times and have lost hope in. Um, and to be able to, again, work hand in hand. So that's why initiatives, looking at, okay, if it's mental health needs or substance abuse, what are the conditions at home? And are there ways for us to be able to allocate funding and resources back into community to help address those immediate needs that are going unmet? So that person's one step closer to reaching higher potential for help.
Frank, helping out, Frank looks at a lot of the grants for us. You know, most of these grants will not pay for prison or whatever. So an actual physical building that could house people, we can't use grant dollars. But if it would help with staffing, again, if you can find folks that will staff it, sometimes there is grant opportunities that can help provide the therapies and, and the staffing to check in on folks. But they don't do anything for the rest of the mortgage.
Any idea why? I mean, that seems like, it seems like the place we might want to start.
And if there are some development grants, so some like rural development grants that might support those capital expenditures, but it's very few and far between. More of the behavioral health resources are looking to build capacity of service, build capacity of services. More of the behavioral health resources are looking to build capacity of service, build capacity of services. And then to have communities develop that claim and say, this is what capacity building looks like. So residents are better supported. But to the point, Dr. Yarrow, we have a lot of those program operations, whether it's lifting up a new program to help close a gap or to expand current programs to better address community need. There's more resource at the federal level being allocated for that, for which we've asked our grants department to keep a pulse on and to forward. And so we actually just reviewed a couple, which there are eligibility, issues with eligibility. But we're constantly reviewing those because we know there's still a lot of work done to be, be done in Michigan, but specifically in Lenawee. And we have a good opportunity to work together on addressing that.
Thanks, staffing is such a huge concern with three colleges in the, in the community. I would hope that we have a better program, better connections with them. Just, you know, the career that, that all of you are in is so taxing and so wearing. Burnout, not burnout, but wear and tear. We need to have that kind of stat, we need to have that additional help, all of you.
Less than two percent of graduating physician classes go into mental health, less than two percent. And nursing, I wanted to say, is less than five percent. So there's just not the interest. It usually takes somebody who saw it as a child, lived through it, that has a passion for it and goes into it.
And, and also considering rural community space provider shortages. So if that statistic is broader, that disparity is going to be even more amplified for rural communities than which one of the counties is.
So why, why, why rural communities?
Yeah, oftentimes it's, uh, looking across the country, funding, resource allocations, oftentimes rural communities aren't competitive because of that volume, that demand. So, you know, you're looking at a community of just under a hundred thousand residents that's near, you know, Detroit, Washington, Ann Arbor, Torito, you know, other, other communities. And so it becomes a competitive environment for funding, for which is really not a level playing field for rural communities.
Also ethnic diversity. So again, I mentioned four medical grads. To be honest with you, a lot of my psychiatrists and nurses are not from the United States. And so rural communities sometimes don't have the same cultural diversity that supports their family life or their religion. So that is a little bit difficult in, I mean, we're rural, but we're really close to Ann Arbor, so they will go there. I will say today's medical grads are not like the medical grads of twenty years ago, which is good. I don't want people working day in, day out, not taking breaks, but they want more nine to five jobs. I think Catherine's mentioned it, you know, they can put every demand in front of us that they want. And if we don't give it, they'll go somewhere else because we're all fighting for the same two people. So, you know, when they have multiple choices on, in front of them, make this as attractive as you can. And trust me, I, I sell the lakes, I sell houses to them, I will go plant flowers in their yard for them, I will do whatever it takes. But it, it is a little more difficult because it's more isolated and dual income is a big piece of it too.
I can't imagine, at the end of the day, what is a win for any of you?
I think if somebody placed and turned around and said, thank you, that's a win.
And I think continuing to, to advocate for this and to advocate for rural communities and what we're experiencing because we're not alone. There's, there's probably a number of other communities in similar positions. And if we're able to kind of put our heads together and look at recommendations at higher levels that help support that work or to help those allocations that can be racked and tied to written fall shifts.
For us, when we actually get someone engaged, which happens a lot, and it makes sense and they're able to move forward in their treatment, that's a good point.
How do you, how do you think your presentation at the House of Ropes, do you think it was well received? Was there a lot of interest in that or did?
I was very different. I wasn't on there for mental health, I addressed it a little bit. I was dealing more with healthcare in general. I represented the Michigan Hospital Association, not Lenawee County, obviously my experiences were shared there. There's a lot of misperceptions, a lot of assumptions. And you can't know either one of our world unless you really step into our four walls and you talk with our staff and you see what they're about. My hope is from there that we'll get asked to go back and they'll explore other opportunities. Because really, I think we're the best stewards of where dollars need to go. And I think it's really a collaboration. So it's not just us coming up with a solution and, and putting that weight on our shoulders. It's really sitting down with folks like yourself and having somebody listen and advocate for us. It's sitting with schools, it's getting in front of students. We're looking at getting in front of junior high and grade school and trying to show that healthcare can be attractive. It used to be a very kind of romantic job and honestly, nobody wants to go in there. If they go in it, they don't want to work in a hospital. And everybody wants to do our job and nobody wants to do inpatient work, right? So they want to steal everything from us, but not the inpatient piece. So you will always need us, you will always need community mental health. So you only get a little bit of time, I think I consumed unfortunately too much of the time. So Catherine probably didn't get as much of what she needed or the others on community mental health. But there's a much bigger discussion that needs to happen that isn't. And I will say from the Michigan Hospital, so we're trying to bring public health into a collaborative effort in the state. And that would be kind of at the forefront, that would be leading the United States, modeling with smaller areas. Because really it, it needs us coming together and understanding each other's operations. And then getting people that can support us and have a louder voice at the table when it comes to state federal dollars, understanding that.
So it'll be a shorter term time, but.
I can say a lot in a short line, I want to have to. But I, I am hopeful, I'm always hopeful that we'll have some more work happening from that first meeting. Really, the whole conversation was about workforce shortages and some ideas that we have that maybe will get us through this crisis period, but also planning for the future. How do we, how do we get more people interested in doing this work? That's what we need to really focus on. But meanwhile, the short, we have to deal with the shortage. And how do we, how do we piece some things together so that people are getting prepared?
Any other questions for us? Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments.
Open to starting that conversation. But we appreciate spending a reason here with this. So there, moving on, we have our transportation coordinator with us tonight, special guest. We had a, a meeting I shared with you, I think, in my weekly report of, of their board. Transportation Corporation Board, at which representatives of MDOT appeared and kind of encouraged us to think about an authority as opposed to the structure that we have now. And I don't know how much do I know about the structure that we have now, but it's sort of a parallel structure where the city has its program and the county has its program and really they're run as separate programs to the point where you literally aren't supposed to take this bus across the street from Meyer to Walmart because that's now in the county's program, the state's program. I, MDOT really encouraged us to look at an authority, which would be a countywide authority to provide for those services. We're fairly unique at this point in the state in terms of how we do it. Everybody else is kind of merged, that was in our kind of situation before. There are advantages to an authority, most particularly knocking down those artificial barriers. Kate's standpoint greatly simplifying her life in terms of instead of having two sets of buses, she'll have one. Potentially in the future, there would be other funding sources available to it. But as Marty and I talked at that meeting, again, Benny wants to go there initially. The idea would be that we would continue to fund it as we do now with a contribution from the city and a contribution from the county. With that as an introduction, the more about that, that you want to share, Kate. Our goal tonight is to get, the, the board passed a resolution, the Transportation Corporation Board passed a resolution by asking you and the county board of commissioners to consider this. So this is our first effort to get you to consider it. But Kate, I'll let you add to that.
Yeah, there are several barriers that make it difficult for the two systems. They have two different fares, so that makes it difficult. Like Mr. Elliott said, take a bus currently, Adrian, Dial-A-Ride can take you to Meyer. But if you want to leave from Meyer and go to Walmart, you have to get a Lenawee transportation bus, which doesn't seem like very difficult with, like in the spectrum of it. But now you pay a different fare. And trying to explain that to individuals of why it costs me only a dollar to get to Meyer, but now you're going to charge me a dollar fifty to go across the street. That is a daily complaint that we have. One of the biggest benefits I think of that is, is we currently, we're separated by the boundaries. And we had Jim Rock there too, he's our operations manager with both systems. And he said, I can take sixteen buses and sixteen buses can go anywhere. Where currently, we had a situation last week with the individual, we take home like clients of Hope, the Hope Center and Goodwill and such. And so about two thirty in the afternoon, our Lenawee transportation buses are going to Blissfield and Tecumseh and Morancey and all over. But then that limits, like, I can't go to the hospital because I don't have a bus in the area. So we can't extend services at this time because we're limited by those boundaries also. We are looking to extend them in the evening time as far as that goes and eat some potentially Saturday services. But it would be nice to be able to say, okay, only Lenawee transportation buses go out to the hospital because that's outside the city limits. So there's a lot of different reasonings why this would be a good move. Like I said selfishly for myself, I do an application with the state for Dial-A-Ride and I also do an application with the state for Lenawee transportation. It's a grueling task, but in the end, like I said, that's selfish for myself. I want to do what's best for the community and I really feel that this is best for the community. We have Dial-A-Ride often, if I hear it once, I hear it a million times, that individuals have had long waits. And that's difficult when I only have four Dial-A-Ride buses running. What we've kind of done is like, I feel like my job is to service the community. So there's times that I say to individuals, okay, I don't have a Dial-A-Ride bus, but I have a Lenawee transportation bus that's sitting empty. If you're willing to pay the extra fare, we can send it out to you right now. And a lot of times they take advantage of that. With that being said, that's kind of probably a great area as far as crossing boundaries. We are very unique that because I'm the only director or transportation coordinator of both of them. Generally, you would have to let the other system know, but I'm a one woman show, so.
You're the other system.
Yeah, I am the other system, yes, so, yeah. There's a lot that we're trying to do. We have non-emergency medical transport, we've been working closely with Frank to be able to bridge that gap also because that is a huge concern here in our community.
What's the downside?
We asked MDOT what the downside was and they didn't really have a response for us. I, you know, my biggest concern was, okay, will I not get the same funding that I would get? Because currently Adrian gets their funding and Lenawee gets their funding. We would still get the same amount of funding as far as that goes. I, I think one of the things I would look at, which would be the biggest downfall is currently, I don't know what the allocation is for the city that puts in each year as far as that goes. So we would have to address that to say if it's a flat dollar amount, Lenawee kind of has where they have actually allocated that within the budget each year. So I think that might be an obstacle for the city maybe, but easy enough to figure out, yeah.
You kind of answered my question. I guess I was just going to put it in a different way in that if you do merge, your, your, your funding is still the same. But would you take a new look at your, your pricing structure?
Oh, we have to because where we currently have a two dollars a full fare for Dial-A-Ride. So if you're disabled, elderly or low income, you can get that for half there, which would be the dollar. So then if you flip to the other side of Lenawee transportation, full fare is three dollars and half fare is a dollar fifty. So I don't know how you would blend the two without some type of a fair structure changing that would be unanimous for.
So you may just have to throw it all away and start over?
Right, right. Well, and it's like little things that you don't think affect, you know, like the elderly. We have tokens for Dial-A-Ride or for Lenawee transportation, we have tickets for Dial-A-Ride. So when they get on the bus, they're pulling out their tickets and if I can't accept tickets, I don't want a transportation bus because it's Adrian money. So, I mean, just, there's just so many little things that need some adjusting on that, that makes it difficult.
So no matter, really, go right now, Lenawee Transportation, if they want to go from Morancey to Tecumseh, it's the same fare or if they're just staying in Ingraham? One way trans, does the fare change on the distance?
Not at this time, no. That is something that we could look into. MDOT had said that that's something that some of the other ones do, they do zones. And so if you're in this zone, it's this much, if you're in this zone and the further out. It's difficult because I think what's unique in Lenawee County is that we are so vast. And so I had an example of, Smith City is actually Lenawee County. And I don't have the ability to take a bus all the way out to Smith City for at the maximum three dollars and then bring them back. So where, that's where I'm thinking in the future, maybe the zones might be worth checking into, so.
If you become a Lenawee County authority, is there any potential that a city outside of Adrian would help subsidize some of that? County and the city help with that? Is there a potential for, you know, Tecumseh, Morancey or somebody else to help subsidize some of that?
I think we had talked with Marty Marshall from the county and he had said that, you know, you could actually ask for a millage. But at this time, what the county and the city are actually putting into the system is less than, Catherine, can you help me remember? Because she was on, she's on our board, I think it was five one hundredths of a mil. And I just don't know, currently at this time, we have some cleanup on a reputation from the transportation system as far as that goes. And I don't know that even a, a mill of any nature would pass right now.
So if, would they, because I, my, I'm thinking to make the services go a little bit longer. So like when people actually get out of work to get, make sure that they have rides home if they don't have a vehicle. So, you know, if people work till nine o'clock even, they have to walk home in the dark and the cold, so. Would it be possible to extend some of that?
We are actually currently working on that right now as far as that goes. So yes, I would like to really open up that, I call it second shift. We heard of an individual that was walking home in the dark and in the icy and she's partially blind. And I thought, what in the world? I mean, that's, that's the people that I want to help. So yes, that would be definitely, we have hired free drivers, which has helped tremendously. We actually put on a second dispatcher, which means we've got some good movement, attraction in transportation. So yes, I, we have two different vehicles that are actually considered, they call them job access reverse mute, so that acronym is JAR. And so we have two vehicles, we currently only utilize one. And that particular vehicle is only being used from eight in the morning till about four o'clock in the afternoon. I would like to do a split shift with the driver perhaps and get the people to work in the morning. And then often like a school bus driver with you, maybe come back at three o'clock and then get them back home and taking the people back to, we need to go to work at three o'clock. So there's a lot of changes that we have coming up as far as that goes.
Is there some flexibility in vehicles? Are other systems using vehicles other than the larger buses?
Yes, and actually we're looking into the Ford Transits because actually a Ford Transit can pull as many people as individuals as our buses can right now. Our biggest thing is that like mobility, wheelchairs and the scrapping down where Ford Transit might limit our ability to put only one wheelchair on the bus and have it, uh, secured. We are looking at that also because in the winter months, some individuals don't come into Hope and Goodwill. And so our numbers are really decreased. Well, we were currently sending a bus out to Morancey for three individuals. And cost effectiveness, especially with the cost of fuel, to be able to send a Ford Transit out, there would be a much better option than to send out a full-size bus.
I too find that the zone arrangement is really quite, is a good way to look at it from other cities that I've seen. And also the variety of vehicles, I'd be interested in seeing how that would help you.
I feel too, the transportation side of it, if we can extend those hours into the evening, it would really help our, our workforce in general. I mean, the only reason, I have an autistic son who does not drive at all, the only reason he can work at Brookdale Assisted Living is because between my, me, my mother-in-law. is because between my me, my mother-in-law, my husband, my father-in-law, my parents, like one of us has always got to be available at seven P M. When he gets up because there there is no transportation to bring him home from Brookdale at that time. And I hear that a lot from other people that are without cars or you know whatever it might be, the situation that they're in or they can't drive or you know whatever it might be. But I do feel we've lost a lot of that workforce at kitchens, at you know restaurants, at those kind of places because they have to be home by a certain time because they're so depend, you know, counted on those hours. And that's concerning.
I we are definitely, that's a big gap in transportation that we have. We're definitely looking into that as far as that goes. Um. Even if we can extend them maybe five, six o'clock in the evening, we have people that go to doctor's appointments and if they're not done by two thirty, we can't guarantee them a ride home. That breaks my heart. I'm like that. I just don't understand that. But if we're limited with what our resources are right now.
Personally, I think there's something I pursue. I don't, we have Commissioner Collins back here. Is it something the county commissioner considers?
It's a fairly simple process. You know, we just went through it. As long as we're not proposing to add millage funding at this time, which is what the official thought. It's just some paperwork that the city attorney can help us with. It's not very complex.
I can't speak for the other commissioners, but I certainly like to see us move forward with that.
Yeah, I think I think it'd be a wonderful refresh if if we didn't get this kind of thing going where universal tokens and and time schedules were different and and it would freshen up the entire system and and the entire community would uh start to know that and rely on it. I think that'd be great.
Well, I think, you know, you don't think about counties, but it's not cheap to get a driver's license nowadays. We all took it in high school and then you just got a driver's license. But now it's like three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And so there's a lot of teams that I think could actually benefit from you know, like a workforce type thing or whatever, being able to go to work. So hopefully moving forward in the, in, you know, I would like it to be public transportation. Maybe not on the scale of Ann Arbor, but real close.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's a consensus to move forward with that. And so we work on a strategy to get you paperwork. Assuming the county board of commissioners agrees. All right, so our third uh and final pre meeting agenda item is we had a request of Brenda's Little Taste of Texas, which is currently on Toledo Street, but is moving out to the far south end of Main Street. Pause, I believe it's the one where Big Lots is, if I'm not mistaken, yeah. And uh, if you know anything about that plaza, it's a unique plaza because Big Lots and those anchor stores are actually in Madison Township, but everything that is in front of it is in the city.
Staples is there. Staples and Adrian, Big Lots is in that.
Other than the lobby, the lobby's in Adrian. Once you get past the spending machine. Anyway, so that's their proposed location. I did put a letter that Brenda wrote. I had it placed on the table. They're requesting our last remaining class C liquor license, quota license. You'll recall from our discussion a few months back about Bob Evans, who also requested the same license that we have one available for you to assign. We now have another request for that. So rather than put this on as an action item, we want to put that as a discussion item.
If I remember correctly, one of our rationales for declining Bob Evans' request was our interest in holding onto the license to be able to bring somebody downtown as, you know, of being able to offer off a license and I'm not adamant to be opposed to this, but um if we're changing our way of thinking, we ought to at least consider that. Um, you know, is is I think Commissioner Strayer mentioned that that there is some value associated with the license. And if it if it meant bringing something else into the downtown area, I mean, if Brent is moving, we're losing a downtown uh restaurant. So that's kind of the, that's the crux of the problem that I'm dealing with there.
Yeah, you're right. That was part of our discussion previously, as I recall as well. And there was sort of the underutilization of uh of others, which I think played into your position as well.
Can I get some clarification on that though? So they could still apply and try to get a liquor license. They just would have to pay for it, correct?
Well, there's an open market for liquor licenses, right? And so they already issued ones that are out there. You can buy them on the open market. The market sets the value of those. They can be transferred in anymore. The city attorney may know more about this really than I do. I don't know a ton about liquor licenses, but uh you can transfer them in from certain areas if you acquire them. There is another option. If you're doing a redevelopment, limited, I believe, to downtown, but redevelopment liquor licenses are in addition to your quota. However, you have to spend, as I recall, at least seventy-five thousand dollars of renovations to be able to qualify for a redevelopment.
It is the old Salsaritas right next door to Mancino. And we've done quite a bit of renovation on it. Remodeling and plumbing and electrical. It turned out that the fire suppression system was out of code. So I'm now waiting on parts for that to be fixed. But um I know there hasn't been anybody out there in that area or in that small plaza for quite some time. Adrian Indoor Gardens finally went in. I see what like a year or so ago. So they're a new um renter out there and then we could be the second, but there's still a lot of empty space out there.
That space right next to the iDoctor?
S D S.
And Mancino.
Yes. It's right in that area. Oh, yeah. They're going strong.
I think she said fifteen years.
Thirty years, thirty years.
Thirty years they've been there.
Yeah.
But uh we tried to stay in the downtown area. We tried really hard. We were offered buildings, but the build out is so astronomical to add kitchens and HVAC systems and all the proper, you know, equipment that you need to operate. I just couldn't do it. I mean, I've spent a small fortune out there already just remodeling that, which is not my building. Um, I signed a five-year lease, so I plan on being out there long term. Um, it's, you know, I worked, I retired from Lenoy County Courthouse. And I've always loved doing food. So now I do what I enjoy doing. And um we just, we outgrew this place and I wanted to stay in downtown so bad, but we just couldn't find a place, nothing that would work for us and nothing that already had the things that we needed. So unfortunately, we're having to move a little bit further out.
Do you think that the customer base that you established downtown will follow you?
Definitely, yes.
Our customers are so excited that we're going to have larger dining, better parking.
The parking.
Again, a lot of people that walk to us because you can't park downtown.
Well, Mancino seats forty-nine and they're smaller than me. So if I was guessing, I would say I'm probably going to be somewhere between the sixty and seventy range. That would be my guess.
So what kind of hours, maybe you mentioned this, what kind of hours do you plan on having? Because I would think that most alcohol consumption would be a little later in the day.
I do want to stay open into the evening, but I'm not going to be like, you know, eleven midnight or you know, like some of these other places do because I know that a lot of my girls that are coming on, they're not going to want to stay that late. I mean, there's other options out there if, you know, for the late night people that are regular bar bars, you know. I mainly just want to, for people to come in and just be able to have a nice meal, have drinks with their meals. Um, you know, even with the family, be able to dine in, whatever. Um. But I will not stay out there till wee hours of the night.
We're gonna do seven days a week.
Yeah, we would like to be, you open seven days a week though, as long as we have the staffing. Right now, we do as far as the outlook. Yeah, we've got a lot of people that are ready for work, so.
You have the secret there.
We just know a lot of people. It helps. I mean, we have a food trailer and you know, we have the restaurant and I've been doing this since two thousand and nine, since I retired from Lenoy County. And um I've met a lot of people. She's worked in every restaurant and bar that is up around the Devil's Lake area. So we know a lot of people.
And then when she retires, her.
That's what I'm hoping for is that once I retire, that she can keep on going. So we just wanted to kind of be afforded the chance to build a nice business out there in that area, in that center where I know we need to bring in some more businesses. Still pretty empty out there, but there's a lot, quite a bit of traffic. I sit out there some days when I'm working out there.
I was spouting when I went out and I wondered what was going on out there, yeah.
But um, yeah, it would be nice to see more people move out that way.
I don't know that we're going to decide that tonight. Got a couple of commissioners missing that we really ought to involve in the conversation.
Do you want to continue when we are getting close to the end of our pre meeting? Uh, do you want me to have this back on? What are you hoping to open, Brenda?
I am hoping to be, I'm probably about ninety percent done. Um, if I was guessing, I would say probably, hopefully, at least by the end of May. Tomorrow and then.
So you're opening with or without a liquor license?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I'm, yes, I will be opening anyway.
Okay, so what we, like Commissioner Gau said, we have missing members tonight. So we'll add this for the next pre meeting agenda as well, which is April eighteen. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you uh for other items of public comment.
Do you have time? I'm going to move into public comment. Is that okay? All right. At this time, we will have public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address.
Hello, I'm McKean Ramos, four twenty-two South Winton Street. I know you're shocked to hear from me. Every meeting. So I drop it in real quick, yes. Mental health is indeed a major problem here in uh the city and the county. I've experienced and I'm sure a lot of people have. So definitely hope that you're going to be do, going to look at it uh very closely and see what you can do to help improve the situation, especially now that you're a little more involved. And um transportation's also been a major issue, as you know, and yes, I'm glad you're all talking about these evening times because those are one day. I know a friend who, because he has to go to work and come back at like midnight, he slipped on ice and lost all color vision. And now has to walk home like that in the middle of the night. So is that the issue for a lot of people and having some transportation later, having more transportation, I feel it would be a great benefit. I know you all know this because I've been telling you it for years. And that's all I have for you now. I won't say more next. You know, worry.
A mayor and commissioners down four seven five Meadowbrook Drive, just a follow-up conversation about um Brenda's Little Taste of Texas application for the liquor license. If you ever wondered about the response of this community to her food, you should have been at Artlicious last year. She had about thirty people in line all day long. A great food and I would certainly uh welcome you revisiting this issue when everybody's back from spring break and encourage you to support this request. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and we will begin our regular meeting at seven oh five. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America. To the republic, persons, nations, under God.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Health is absent. Commissioner Roberts is absent. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
And Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Health and Commissioner Roberts?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gaus. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
And Mayor Heath.
Yes.
The motion to excuse Commissioner Health and Roberts was approved by a five to zero vote.
At this time, I'm going to ask our Adrian Police Chief Vince Emmerich to please come up here as he has a special presentation.
Okay, all right, very good. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Vince Emmerich. I'm the chief of police for the city of Adrian. You may have noticed we have a larger audience than normal tonight. I would like to honor two of Sienna's lacrosse players uh for some assistance that they gave last week. We had a series of crimes being committed in the city started about two weeks ago where two individuals were going around to local businesses. Pushing out carts of merchandise, basically challenging the employees to stop them. Uh, they had a couple failed attempts. They had a couple successful attempts. One failure was at Family Farm in Home where one of my relatives works. Uh, he called me personally to let me know that it took all of the employees to basically block the entrance so that these people could get, not get out. Needless to say, brazen acts. And uh little did we know at the time that they also had a number of outstanding warrants, felonies, misdemeanors from neighboring jurisdictions. So not, not very nice people. On the day in question, the twenty-fourth, uh their most recent attempt was at Staples. Uh, it came in through dispatch, uh the vehicle description, which Officer Mall, who's with us in the back, raise your hand, Austin. There we go. Found the vehicle and made a traffic stop. The vehicle ditched into a driveway and the driver bailed out and took off running. The passenger stayed in the vehicle. So Officer Mall stayed with the passenger to make the arrest. Uh, also in the back, we have Sergeant Adams and Officer Snowburger. They arrived to assist. Uh, set up what perimeter we could. We knew that the individual was in jumping fences and running through backyards and we had him contained within a certain area. All the while, these two gentlemen uh from Sienna's lacrosse team were monitoring the situation from their vehicle. They were very smartly acting like professional witnesses and relaying that information to us. Every time this person's head would pop up or he would jump a fence, they would tell us where he was, where they saw him uh and enable us to close in, close in, shrink that perimeter until eventually we got down to the point where this individual had nowhere to go. And he popped out to run and when it looked like he might have one small avenue. And he popped out to run and when it looked like he might have one small avenue, uh, these two young men, uh, pulled up and blocked his escape and we were able to make the arrest. So it was, uh, it was the end of a difficult week. Um, and with that person's arrest, uh, that, that problem has been solved. So, uh, we are very grateful for the assistance. We, we never want a citizen to put themselves in harm's way, but these gentlemen were smart enough. They kept their wits about them. And they, they provided just enough assistance when we needed it to, to us, to, uh, help us make that arrest. So we're very thankful for that. Um, I would like to acknowledge them with with two awards. The award says Citation for Citizen Action. And it says this Citation for Citizen Action Award is presented to you in gratitude for your selfless acts in service of this community on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. It says, day after day, ordinary people become heroes through extraordinary and selfless actions to help their neighbors. Sylvia Matthews Barnwell. And then I've signed. So if you two gentlemen, please come up here and accept your award.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And you, you don't have to sit through this whole meeting and endure it. You, you're allowed to leave if you want to. That's fine. I'm just letting you know. So, but thank you very much. And, and thank you, Coach, for coming as well as the dean for students at Santa Heights University. We appreciate you. Thank you. Moving on, I have, we have another little bit of good news. Um, I presented last Tuesday night the, uh, proclamation from the city of Adrian to, um, Adrian College Men's Hockey Team who just recently won a national championship. So they were presented with that, um, on, on the ice and it was a really great event, but I do want to acknowledge that and read through that proclamation here tonight, even though obviously they're not here. They've already been given the proclamation. Whereas the team won the school's first national championship in any sport and won its thirty-first consecutive game, finishing the season thirty-one and one. And whereas the Adrian College Hockey Team won the two thousand twenty-two NCAA Division Three Men's National Championship on Saturday, March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas Adrian College broke the record for best winning percentage in a single season in Division Three history, breaking the record set by UMass Dartmouth in nineteen eighty-six. And whereas multiple athletes received awards throughout the season and Coach Adam Krug was named the NCH A Coach of the Year, as well as the winner of the Edward Jeremiah Award for the American Hockey Coaches Association Division Three Coach of the Year Award. And whereas, in addition to their athletic achievements, sixteen Bulldogs were also named to the NCH A All Academic Team with a GPA of three point three or higher. And whereas the team, as well as Adrian College, is a point of pride for the citizens of Adrian. Now therefore, I, Angela Sorkheath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, along with the City Commission and the citizens of Adrian, do hereby congratulate the Adrian College Hockey Team on their great accomplishments. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, was really awesome. We have our, our, a first, uh, national championship for either co, for any of the colleges, I do believe, um, in, in, in our city. And that was just a really great accomplishment. It was a really great evening and it was, um, it was just a really nice, um, a really nice time. And, um, Commissioner Gauze was also there to celebrate that, their achievements last Tuesday night as well. And, um, I thank you for being there and helping support them. And he actually made the long drive to Lake Placid, New York and actually watched them win the national championship. So. Yes. So anyways, moving on to our consent agenda. May I get a motion to adopt our consent agenda? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
And Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Moving on to our regular agenda. Under resolutions. Resolution R twenty-two dash zero nineteen is from finance. It is a resolution to approve the city administrators recommended fiscal year two thousand twenty-four through twenty-eight capital improvement program and fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through twenty-three capital budget. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauze with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero twenty is from the police. It is a resolution to approve the purchase of two Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
I have a question for the chief. And I probably should know the answer for anyway. Are these replacement vehicles or the addition?
Yes, sir. These are replacement vehicles, uh, part of our five-year rotation. So they'll be going in. It's, uh, purchased under the My Deal bid, the state bid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero twenty-one is from the police. It is a resolution to accept the SRT Body worn Camera Grant. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauze with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
The rev, resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero twenty-two is from Human Resources. It is a resolution to allow loans to be taken from defined contribution pension plans for city of Adrian employees. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero twenty-three is from Engineering. It is a resolution to authorize the approval of application to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five Urban Funding Grant in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, including a twenty percent match by the city. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero twenty-four is from the Fire Department. It is a resolution to authorize the city administrator to enter into a contract to purchase a Stifan Corporation Fire Engine. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
And Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Commissioners, there is a departmental report in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to public comment. At this time, it is time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address. And we will begin inside the city chambers first and after all public comment is completed, we will open it up to Zoom participants.
Hello, Wookiee Ramos, four twenty-two South Winter Street. I told you I'd hear from you again. So I'm up here again, of course, just to let you know the usual monthly thing of second Friday is on the eighth, seven PM. We should be in Parish Park. Be happy to see some of you there. If you want to come see the community enjoying their, uh, first time out in spring, uh, as long as it doesn't rain on us. Otherwise, we'll be next door in three oh one South Tecumseh Street like usual. And then on the tenth, we'll be having our normal A three meeting and you're welcome to contend. We'll, of course, be doing our usual stuff and uh, that'll be at three PM and four PM, available in person at three oh one South Tecumseh Street. Might sound familiar and, uh, also available on Zoom. That's all for now. Thank you.
Terry Collins, Levin Scott Court, Adrian. I am also a member of the county commission. Uh, I just want to say a couple of things. First, I want to laud this commission for the information you had in the pre being there. Some sorely, sorely needed programs for Lenoir County and for the city patrons specifically. But I want to ask or inform, I'm not sure which. Those saved received X dollars through the ARPA program to do certain things within the city and what they do is entirely up to this commission. Lenoir County received nineteen million dollars for that same program. I urge each one of you commissioners to reach out to the county commissioners and not just the two that represent your city, but to all county commissioners and advise them as to how you feel those funds should be spent and where they should and should not go. There's a lot of, uh, angst in the commission right now. By the commission, I'm referring to the county commission. There is a dichotomy as to what should and shouldn't happen with those funds. And I urge you, if you have feelings, reach out to every single commissioner on the county commission and let them know how you feel. Thank you.
Hello. I'm David Kovaleski. And I got some complaints, a whole bunch of them, but I'm not going to bring them up at this meeting. Just a couple of them. One of them is, uh, you cannot park a Rolls Royce, a Lamborghini or a Corvette on the property. Front, front, uh, yard. But you can have that thing full of junk. And, uh, I got a satellite photo of a place next to my empty lot. There's a bunch of junk. You go down Baker Street and you'll see plenty of places that, uh, have junk in them. And they send me the citation. I'm the landlord. It's not my car. They, the people that rent the place are responsible for the property and their own car. Now, if I go, uh, rent a car and I get stopped by the police to get a citation ticket, who gets the ticket? Me? Or the car rental company? Same thing here. I rent it out to them. They're responsible for it. But yet, your inspector over there, Jake, he decides to give me a citation. So I think you need to fire some of these people. Especially that Jake. That's all I got to say. I've got several houses here in Adrian and I kind of keep a watch on them. And I don't like getting citations for my tenants.
Hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, I will now open up public comment to those on Zoom and you will be able to see your time on the screen. And please, even if you're participating via Zoom, please state your name and address. Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Okay, before I'm asked for a motion to adjourn, just to remind everyone that there will be a special meeting that will be occurring tonight directly after this meeting. So we will give like a few minute recess and go right into that special meeting. May I get a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please. Or sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Special meeting will begin in a few minutes. I call to order the special meeting for the Adrian City Commission today, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. At this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
And Commissioner Gauze.
Present.
Mayor, I would like to request to go into closed session, um, in the matter of Weisberger Ventures, the second LLC in Oasis Wellness Center LLC.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes. At this time, we will be going into the back into closed session. There may be action coming out of this. We're not sure yet. So if you do want to stay out here, we may be coming back out. We may not. We shall see.
For everyone on Zoom, I'll be removing you to the waiting room. If you'd like to remain in the waiting room, when the commission comes back in session, I'll let everyone back in. John, can you hear?
I can, Michelle. Thank you.
Okay, and you can see everybody in the pre-meeting room?
Yes, please. Thank you. Kathleen, you're good?
Yeah, second here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Because I was in the middle of baking and Heather, but
Is the problem coming virtually, John and Kathleen, is that you don't get cookies?
I'll be there. I'll be there next time.
Do it again.
I'd like to move to come out of closed session.
Support.
I have a motion to come out of closed session from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Motion to end the closed session is approved by a five to zero vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero twenty-five is from Administration. It is a resolution to authorize entry of a consent judgment in the matter of Weisberger Ventures, the second LLC, and Oasis Wellness Center LLC versus the City of Adrian. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
The resolution was approved by a five to zero vote.
At this time, it is time for general public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments? At this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Strayer. All in favor say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.